Thank you with your patience, we'll be ready in just a few minutes. Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting. We have a quorum, could we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Mayor Meyer?
Here, and I believe Katie has a statement? Or do you want me to make a statement about not having anything to report from the special meeting? Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda, I was looking for it. Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
If we could just real quickly adjourn the special meeting?
Oh, adjourn the special meeting, I missed that part. Could I get a motion to adjourn the special meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, special meeting adjourned. Thank you, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public comments, the time for tonight's items will be three minutes each. To ensure all speakers feel welcome to share their views during public comments, members of the audience are kindly requested to refrain from applauding or speaking to the city council from the audience without being called upon first.
At this time, the public present in the council chamber are permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items that are listed under informational reports or on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new requests. Comments for the meeting's detailed agenda items or business items should be made when those items are called. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. The microphone will be muted when the timer expires. We did receive one written public comment for this portion of the meeting, which we will summarize at the end of the public comments. The first speaker I have is Danny Dorman.
Okay. As at least three of you know, there are truths and there are facts. They are not often mutually inclusive. Fact, the vice mayor recused herself from two votes on May 23rd, 2023, and June 11th, 2024 because of a potential conflict of interest with Bob Gregory. Fact, on January 28th, 2025, the vice mayor co-signed an agenda item to change for only the fifth time in 25 years, the designation of one specific type of business in a particular building. This business was a tattoo parlor. The business owner, building owner rather, is Bob Gregory. Fact, on July 29th, 2025, the vice mayor was the deciding vote of the approval for a change, allowing for the permitted use of one business at one location owned by the man that the vice mayor's company has as a client. Fact, on August 5th, 2025, Bob Gregory went out of his way to say he never had an attorney-client relationship with the vice mayor. Now, I spoke to the vice mayor yesterday. She told me her truth. And it is her decision to tell her truth to anyone else. Unfortunately, her truth does not match the facts. It is the fact, or it are the facts, not the truth, that brought me here. Did the vice mayor tell the truth? Did the vice mayor decision to vote on this terrible idea that changed the downtown specific plan a quid pro quo? A handshake agreement with that man? I don't know. Only God knows her truth. I know the facts. I know the facts presented. Have me again asking you, Madam Mayor, to address this travesty. Specifically how this unusual timeline of events, started by this man, goes contrary to how the process is normally handled. The process of the planning commission being the beginning of the process and not at the end. I know I'll be filing another cure and correct with the specific intent to ensure that the downtown specific plan is not amended to accommodate one business. We need to stand strong. Our city leaders can't bow down to the whims of one property owner. Thank you.
Karina?
Good evening Mayor, council members, and fellow community members. My name is Karina Helby and I'm here alongside my fellow peers representing the youth commission to provide an update on our recent activities and our upcoming plans. At our most recent meeting, the commission successfully nominated and selected the executive committee for the 2025-2026 term, including positions for chair, which is going to be Owen Spishock, vice chair, which is going to be me, I'm so honored, secretary, who will be Rachel Lay, and treasurer Rohan Havan. We're all so eager to guide our efforts throughout the year. We also discussed and approved assignments of youth commissioners to each Brentwood school, Adams, Bristow, Edna Hill, Heritage, and Liberty High School, with the goal of improving outreach and strengthening communication between the youth commission and our local school communities. Additionally, the commission nominated and selected liaisons and alternate liaisons to both the Brentwood Police Activities League and the Parks and Recreation Commission to ensure continued collaboration on youth programs. Looking ahead, the youth commission is considering participation in several community events, which is so exciting, including the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce's Hometown Halloween on October 25th, and the homecoming parades at Liberty High School on September 19th and Heritage High School on September 11th. And before I conclude, I would like to take a moment to introduce two new youth commissioners who have recently joined us. I already know that they're going to bring so much fresh energy and new perspectives to our team. They're excited to contribute to our initiatives and represent the voices of Brentwood's youth. Would you guys like to say a word? Yeah, of course.
Hello, Madam Mayor Meyer, and just the rest of the city council and the rest of the city council staff. Hello, my name is Sahil. I am the newly, one of the newly appointed youth commissioners on the city. And first, I, as you know, my name is Sahil. I like politics, I like math, and I like many other geeky interests. I am in sixth grade. And yeah, now with this improv introduction out of the way, let me just start my whole spiel. Hello, city council staff and city council members. Thank you for letting me present some brief remarks regarding the work of our youth commission. First, hello everybody, my name is Sahil. As you know, after this improv introduction, I am a new commissioner on the Brentwood Youth Commission, and now let's delve into it. Right now, the youth commission is working on greatly enhancing its recreational events. Whether that be by creating new ones or overhauling old ones, this is the year of massive change and cash up from the pandemic. We are also planning to add more incentives and discuss more changes. More information will be discussed as our September meeting. It would be greatly appreciated if any one of our amazing audience members could attend. Next, it, as it is, right, God, next, as our goal is to foster youth inclusivity, promote the quality of life for the youth, and be an advocate for all minors in the city of Brentwood, we would highly encourage the amazing audience to attend one of our meetings. Please come guys, we need more people to come. Finally, thank you, Ms. Madam Mayor Meyer, for inaugurating me, him, and about half of the youth commission last meeting. And thank you to all of the city council and staff and the Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. E. Harithalim, for supporting our initiatives and keeping us alive, the commission, for all these years. Thank you, city council staff and city council members. Now-
Amber?
Can I ask a quick question? Actually, sorry, before you start, don't start the counter yet. Did you want to introduce yourself too?
Oh yeah.
Because that could be a separate, I believe we could just make that a separate public comment.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I wanted to make sure you had the chance to.
Hey, hello, Madam Mayor, hello council. I'm Ara Ranjan, and I'm a student at Heritage High School. I'm a sophomore as of now. I'm in speech and debate, I'm in Boy Scouts, and also the youth commission. Yeah. On the youth commission, I would like to help with events like the Hometown Halloween and the multicultural fair. Yeah, that's all I had, I didn't have anything else. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members and audience. For those that don't know who I am, my name is Amber Zloski, and I'm the owner of Quick Stop on Walnut Boulevard. As a longstanding local business, I am here to address the significant economical harm that would result in local tobacco retailers like my store, Quick Stop, would, were to lose the ability to sell cigarette and tobacco products under the proposed restrictions in the TRL ordinance. For the month ending in July, 2025, cigarette sales represented 25.6% of total sales, while other tobacco products accounted for an additional 8.6% of our monthly sales. Combine the profits from these two categories equal 94.7% of our total payroll costs excluding owners paid for July. That means those categories paid for my payroll that month. If these categories were removed from our product offerings, the resulting revenue loss would make it impossible to maintain current staffing levels. We would be forced to reduce payroll, cut employee hours, and eliminate positions entirely. Displaced employees would likely need to seek work outside Brentwood, increasing commute traffic and reducing the local workforce base. This impact would extend well beyond our store. Reduced payroll means less spending power for our employees, which would ripple outward to other local businesses, service providers, and community resources. The trickle-down effect would weaken Brentwood's economy as a whole. Given these realities, I urge city council to base distance requirements on actual door-to-door measurements rather than property line to property line, as this method more accurately reflects real accountability and accessibility and impact. I also strongly agree with Brentwood. Thank you for your time.
Daniel?
Good evening. I'm here to tell you a story. It's 1971 December. I get off an airplane with about 80 other military members, walk into an auditorium. About 10 minutes in, a full-blood colonel gets up there and says, "When you leave this arena, you're going to go out the gate. There's protesters out there. They're going to call you names, they're going to spit- They're going to call you names, they're going to spit at you, they're going to try to hit you, they're going to throw things at you. Understand this, if you retaliate in any way, shape, or form, we're going to pick you up, bring you back, put you on that airplane that brought you here, and send you back where you came from. About a month and a half ago, this City Council chose to recognize the fact that what we did. And all of that went away. And then June 10th came. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dave.
Hello, my name is Dave Gilbert. I'm a resident of Brentwood and live up in the Trilogy neighborhood. I've spoken before to the City Council a number of times, and I want, first off, wanted to say thank you so much for all of your help with improving traffic safety issues on the Vineyards Parkway. I know it took a long time, but I just want people to know that if they continue to pursue what they think is important, that the City Council will eventually address those issues. And while I live not too far from the Vineyards Event Center, which I know is also on the agenda tonight, I'm here to speak about the fire risk that currently faces our neighborhood. The Contra Costa Fire Department recently adopted the new fire risk maps that came out, I think, believe in July, and it shows newly designated high-risk fire areas. The map now shows a high-high-risk area immediately over our neighborhood. It's only a small portion of our community. It consists of probably two major streets, few side streets, but the new map shows that we are right in the middle of what's constituted as a high-risk fire area. I guess what my question is to the City Council, and maybe this is something you can take under consideration, is between the city and the county, and perhaps the state, what else can you do to help us mitigate the fire risks to our community? We're currently undertaking a number of protective measures to ensure that our community is fire-safe, but these new maps have shown that we are not. And obviously, it has hurt us from an insurability perspective, but more importantly, it indicates that we're not undertaking any measures to do that. So I really would urge the City Council to work with the county and with the state to look at this and decide what else can they do to help us mitigate the risk of fire in that area. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Tom.
Hello. The perk of living two blocks away is when you get your name brought up at the City Council meeting, you can walk down and have a conversation about it. So a couple of things. One, none of you have ever been my attorney, never handled a case for me. I get some people got some information that they thought that was the case. They're wrong. Two, I'm not sleeping with Tony. That's never happened. I don't know what people think. There may be some council members that think I can click my heels together and make magic happen in Brentwood. It's not true. If it was, I'd probably be on an island somewhere. So regarding the tattoo parlor that's trying to occupy my building across the street, anybody, I gave this speech to planning, I'm going to try and be a little nicer this time. Anybody that thinks that I needed help to rent under 650 square feet of the only available space in our downtown community has to be a complete idiot. I've got people, had people lined up, still have people lined up, hoping that somebody over there will fail to try and get that space. I don't need to coerce, I don't need to bribe, I don't need anybody's help. I do everything pretty much on my own in this world. So again, the most desirable real estate in our community, downtown core, people are making applies on social media, spreading rumors to think that I needed help to rent that 625 square feet in the most desirable location, the only available square footage, you've got to be a moron. Okay? You have no idea how business works in downtown Brentwood. You apparently have no idea how real estate works downtown Brentwood. I've been in downtown Brentwood in business for 30 years of my life. I'm 53. What I did before that, I went to school, the majority of that was in downtown Brentwood. Brentwood L, Liberty, Edna Hill, Garen. I've been in downtown Brentwood more days than probably anybody you're ever going to meet. Well, except for some of the really old timers, right? Recently, I was told, because I was one of the good old boys, because I've been here so long, that that's a negative. I'm happy to be a good old boy in Brentwood. I ain't going anywhere. I was here yesterday, I'll be here tomorrow. Anybody wants to step up and start a war, I'm available anytime. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. Moving into informational reports from Council Members Committee's Liaisons and Staff, and this portion of the agenda is to provide an opportunity for council members to report on attendance at events, subcommittee meetings, and entities on which the council member has been appointed as a liaison and for staff to provide brief updates and/or information to the City Council. We will start this time on our left with Council Member Orlemons.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the public comments. Since our last meeting, July 22nd, I attended the Tri-Delta Transit Board Meeting, the Police Activity League Board Meeting. I attended Farmer's Market, and a lot of question always came, why do I keep mentioning that I attended Farmer's Market? And it is, this last time was one of the main reasons. I was approached by several citizens about the tobacco ordinance, about the tattoo parlor, and it gives me the opportunity to make myself available. Should somebody want to talk to me, they know they can find me at the Farmer's Market, but that's why I was there. And that's why I continue to mention it. I had a meeting with Darren Gale. I attended National Night Out with Brentwood PD. I watched the Planning Commission meeting. I did an agenda review for this agenda, and I attended tonight's closed session. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you all for being here. Since our last meeting, I've had two meetings regarding an upcoming youth wellness summit. I've met with businesses regarding various concerns concerning the tobacco retail license. I met with several veterans from our veterans community regarding some of their concerns. I also walked one of our neighborhoods in my district to address some of the concerns regarding criminal activity off of Highland Way and talked to some of the residents there. I also held a neighborhood meeting at Loma Vista Park to address some of the ongoing concerns with that specific neighborhood regarding criminal activity. I met with a mental health provider to learn more about the resources offered to our youth in our community. I also met with our interim city manager and city attorney. I attended the special city council session this evening, and I also celebrated my 11th anniversary out of the country. So for anyone that's reached out to me, I will be getting back to you this week. So thank you. And two, I do want to take a moment to recognize and honor two community members. First, I'd like to extend my heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Ruben de Silva, owner of Rubiano's. If you've ever had the pleasure of meeting Ruben, you knew how much he loved his family, his community, and this town. Many of us have gathered at Rubiano's to either celebrate special events, fundraise for our kids' sports, or simply enjoy a good time. So thank you, Ruben, for all that you and your have, your family have brought to our community. And today, I'd love to honor your contributions to Brentwood and share the grief with your loved ones. And the second person I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to, to his family and friends, is Ron Nun. Ron was a tremendous contributor to Brentwood's farming community, and he played a key role in shaping our agriculture heritage. His dedication, his vision, his generosity, they've definitely left a mark on our town, and his contributions will not be forgotten. Thank you, Ron, for everything you have done for Brentwood. My thoughts and prayers are with you and your family during this difficult time. And respectfully, I would love to ask for our meeting to be adjourned in their memory. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Since the last time I met, I attended an event with Diana Beckton, our DA, where she reviewed all of the crime data and how thankfully crime is being, is reducing in Contra Costa, also about how they're reviewing cases and doing it blind. They don't know the race, the sex, or anything, so it's a lot more fair of a process when they're reviewing cases, which I was happy to hear about. Attended an Eagle Scout meeting where three young men received their Eagle Scout pins, attended National Night Out, watched the Planning Commission meeting, attended the Mayor's Conference. Happy that I attended in Antioch the East Contra Costa African-American hub that was started by Gigi Crowder with NAMI, and attended the Downtown Brentwood Coalition meeting as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. Since our last meeting, I think I forgot to mention in our last meeting that I attended as one of the appointees, the Creed Empowerment Zone meeting, which was really insightful. Lots of talks about how we can get more public utilities to our cities to ensure that projects are completed. I also attended the Farmer's Market. I think there's good synergy at the Farmer's Market and to stop there. I attended the National Night Out. I attended the special city council meeting tonight. I went to the Mayor's Conference in Antioch where Congressman De Sanye presented. I also attended the grand opening of the African-American Holistic Wellness Hub, and I want to just correct one thing, it was started by the 40 Voices Campaign, because Gigi would be upset if we didn't give, it was 40 Voices Campaign. And then the grand opening of the Dental Excellence, which the owner of that business has some robotic technology. He was very happy that the city acknowledged him, as well as Assemblywoman acknowledged him, and he seemed a little choked up behind it, but he was thankful for everyone for welcoming his business to the city of Brentwood. He is one of, I think, only three people, it's either in the US or California, that has robotic technology for dental to do all these treatments. So I thought it was really cool. He showed everybody his robotics. And his family, they were very happy to be here in our city. They chose our city over several cities to bring this technology to. And then the final thing that I attended was the Board of Supervisor meeting today, where there was a lot of public comments and concerns regarding, there was a update from the sheriff on, and one of the things the sheriff reported back is that when someone is, commits a crime, who is not a, who doesn't have US citizenship, then they automatically report them to ICE. And so the big issue is there is nothing in the county's policies or procedures that require the sheriff to report these parties to ICE. If someone is violating a misdemeanor, they're no, they're released after so much time. And so this issue was, should we be reporting these people to ICE or not? So there were 77 public commenters, all in favor of not reporting, making these reports to ICE, that they go through the normal judicial process for their misdemeanors and not be reported to ICE. So it was a very interesting dialogue and conversation. There was also on the agenda, because I want to report back to you all what I heard at the county level. The county did come up, the supervisors decided that while they would not create any type of police or sheriff oversight committee, they were going to look at the policies and procedures to better decipher if they wanted to stop this reporting that was going on that the sheriff's office was electing to do all on their own. The last item that really stood out to me was the idea that they were going to go ahead and authorize the extension of, I think, $7.5 million in funds to the, to the campaign that's supporting the African-American Holistic Wellness Center, that will have about eight different nonprofit organizations in there and resources. So I thought that was awesome. At the African-American Holistic Wellness Center, Diana Beckton was there, Supervisor Burgess stopped by for a short time, Supervisor Preston Scale stayed the entire time, and a bunch of council members. Lively conversation, great, and a lot of Brentwood presence, a lot of Brentwood presence that was really happy that we were there. So other than that, I do also, I went to high school with Ruben and graduated high school with him, and just want to extend the same, our prayers are with the family for both him and Ron Nun's family. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming today. Since we last met, I attended the Tri-Delta Transit Board Meeting. I had a follow-up meeting with staff to discuss the Brentwood Mayor's Conference and how it's going to look the next time we do it. And again, I'm bringing this up, I don't usually talk about meetings I have with staff, but I brought it up because I want to say thank you again to Amanda, Melissa, everyone who was involved in the planning of that, the city manager's office, they did a fantastic job in Brentwood. I think this came after the Liberty Union High School District Convocation, the, which is basically to welcome everybody, the teachers specifically, back to school. Attended the Cal City's Crunch Time at the Capitol webinar to review pending legislation and what they're recommending opposition and support of. The Eagle Scout Ceremony for Michael, Kyler, and Logan, congratulations to them and their families. The Delta Six Meeting, which is a regional meeting that is the four East County mayors and four East County city managers and two East County supervisors to discuss regional issues. National Night Out, I hit seven sites this time, which was a first for me. I usually stay on one side of town, but it's the first year as mayor, so I was trying to get out there as much as I could. As you heard earlier, I swore in five new youth commissioners. That was a huge number. I came to this, to this meeting, and there was this all the way across the entire dais. The Mayor's Conference in Antioch. The, I did a presentation with interim city manager Darren Gale of the State of the City to the Delta Association of Realtors. Our Age and Disabilities from the Communities Committee was, meeting was canceled, but there, they, the Regional Center of the East Bay did a presentation, so I came to that. Contra Costa Transportation Authority, Countywide Transportation Plan Focus Group. I was asked to come and take part in that to represent Brentwood, and a really interesting group of nonprofits and elected officials, talking about what the needs are in their particular parts of the county. I talked a lot about Vasco Road, talked about the safety and capacity of Highway Four, the disabilities access for public transportation. Really interesting meeting. There is a survey that's out right now, and I believe it's been on all the city sites, right? If you get the chance to click onto the city, it's next door, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, right? Please, please, please contribute your thoughts to that. I realize it's going to take forever for anything to be implemented, but we have to start somewhere, and if you don't raise your voice, then they don't know what we know or what we think. Watched the Planning Commission meeting, and I want to say I had several conversations with several residents about an initiative that Brentwood is jumping on this year, the Music on the Porch Day on August 30th. Again, that's going to be posted on city sites, I have it on mine already. It's basically a worldwide initiative to promote the idea that music can unite us. So on August 30th, there will be, the city's going to post kind of a similar map to when there's a house light, like if you want to travel around the city and go to all the houses that have lights. It's going to be places in the city that have signed up and registered through the city to have some sort of performance in their porch. So look for that. If you have a musical act, especially, please sign on. This is probably going to be a little small this year, but we'll build it as we go. Okay. Moving, oh, into interim city manager Darren Gale's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the time to give a few updates. 101, I'd let you know that today we received notification that Grace Arms received approval to continue their program at Liberty High School. So we will be releasing their check, and they will be having their program from September 5th to November 7th.
Can you please explain what the program is?
Yes, so Grace Arms came forward about an evening basketball program. At that time, it was called Midnight Basketball. That is a trademarked name. That's not the name that they're going by, they're calling it Reach. And it's an opportunity for them to provide youth with opportunities and keep, and provide them activities, and youth mentoring, and a variety of other leadership-type skills along with basketball. And we're excited, and the council provided $25,000 for that program. And next on, this is an upcoming meeting, but on Aug, or sorry, Wednesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM, myself, Parks and Rec staff will be presenting to Somerset One related to the wall, just giving them an update. We've been working with their HOA, and they've asked us to provide an update to their membership, and we will be doing that. I did, I have been meeting with current police officers as it relates to the interim chief position, so that we can make an announcement prior to the retirement of our chief. I had a couple of meetings with businesses regarding the TRL, which stands for Tobacco Retail License, and businesses that'll be impacted by it. Had a great meeting with Dr. Kimberly Peyton, who is the president of the East County Chapter of the NAACP, and also had a meeting with Gigi Crowder from NAMI, which stands for the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And I wanted to, my favorite part- And I wanted to, my favorite part of this is thanking staff for some of their efforts that they've done since our last meeting. First, I want to thank Lindsay Loffridge for all of her work on National Night Out. She just did an amazing job. Chief, please pass on our appreciation for everything that she did and your staff. I know that there was a lot of officers there. It was a great time. And I know that everyone appreciates the council members attending as many as they can when you're in town, and they understand that some people are not in town, so it's quite all right. There's next year, first Tuesday in August.
Darren, before you move on, I just wanted to say something really fast. Lindsay did such a great job, our officers, it was the first time I ever saw parents happy to take pictures of their kids in the back of a police vehicle.
I think that was grandma that they liked seeing in the back, too. That was awesome. I wanted to highlight our solid waste staff, Damian, Alfred, Monica, George, and Dave. We had a fire in one of our solid waste vehicles. I mentioned this, number one, because they identified the issue. They quickly got back to the yard and they handled, they handled this issue. Number one, with no one being injured and protecting a very valuable piece of equipment. And so I thank them for their efforts, for the training that Public Works puts in so every day our community stays safe and they're able to provide our solid waste services. I highlight it because you should not be throwing away lithium batteries. Not that we know exactly why this occurred, but many times that's how it does occur. We don't have this issue, or we shouldn't have this issue after 4th of July. It also happens with people throwing fireworks into their garbage cans and they're not fully extinguished. So thank you to the Public Works staff. And then my final thank you is both, oh, actually I have two more. So on Griffith Way, we had a fence fall, and actually, brick fence fell. It was a wall that was owned by the residents, not by the city. And our Parks and Rec Maintenance Team and our Water Division came out, cleaned it up, and made sure that it was safe, and then they were able to help the residents with it. So that's, that's not something that a city has to do, and that was, staff just did that on their own. They realized, they saw the issue, they approached the residents and they helped them with it. I think there's about seven or eight neighbors that streets back up onto Griffith, and they were able to secure that site. So thanks to them. And then my final thank you is to Parks and Rec staff. They just finished a number of summer programs. The swimming pool's still open, I think, for a little while longer, but summer programs, lifeguards, summer camp counselors, all of them. Thank you for all of the work that they do. They provide amazing services to our residents. And then my final one, and I'm sure you'll be happy to hear this, but happy birthday to Alan. Today is his birthday.
And I'm actually going to tag on one more because I forgot to say thank you to Alan. Alan and Andrew were very helpful with the task, the task force, what was it? That I attended to the focus group in providing some Brentwood-specific information about transportation that I should rise up as being a priority for us. Your report was incredibly helpful, and I came very prepared to the meeting and it helped a lot. Thank you. And to Andrew, of course. Thank you for that. Thanks, Darren. Oh, does anyone want to sing "Happy Birthday" with us? Are we ready? Everybody turn your mics on.
All right.
All right. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Alan.
You rock, dude.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you for that suggestion, Vice Mayor. Okay, moving into the consent calendar. Any thoughts on the consent calendar?
I forgot to, I was gonna, we need to talk about E8, just really quick, I think.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to pull E8. Anything else? All right, and a motion to approve the remaining items on consent.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve everything on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Hold a second.
All in favor?
And real quick, I do need to read. We just had an ordinance, so I do need to read the ordinance title real quick. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood approving a zoning text amendment to the Brentwood Municipal Code RZ24-006 that would add development standards for self-storage facilities, add new land use definitions, and update references in all zones throughout the city related to the use. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no opposition, so the consent calendar moves forward. Okay, moving into public hearings. Item F1, to adopt a resolution approving the 2025 Public Health Goal Report on Drinking Water to Satisfy Requirements of California Health and Safety Code Section 11647B. And James Wolfe, Water Operations Manager, will present this report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Staff is presenting this agenda item as a public hearing for your consideration and approval of the city's 2025 Public Health Goal Report. In accordance with the California Safe Drinking Water Act, public water systems serving more than 10,000 connections are required to prepare a public health goal report every three years if any contaminants in the drinking water exceed the established public health goals. The 2025 Public Health Goal Report summarizes water quality data collected from 2022 through 2024 for the city of Brentwood's water supply. The findings confirm that Brentwood's drinking water meets 100% of all enforceable state and federal standards, including maximum contaminant levels, which serve as the regulatory benchmark for safety. While certain constituents such as arsenic, gross alpha, and beta particles, uranium, hexavalent chromium, were detected at levels above the non-enforceable public health goal or the maximum contaminant level goal, the report provides a thorough analysis of potential health risks, available treatment technologies, and the estimated costs associated with further reducing these contaminants. This triennial report, which is unique to California, supplements the city's ongoing water quality monitoring and public reporting efforts, reinforcing Brentwood's continued commitment to transparency and protection of public health. Staff are available for any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I actually have one. During drought years, I'm curious if those levels, I mean, obviously, the water levels change, but do the quality levels change? And if so, how do we mitigate that?
During the dry years, we do see a reduction in groundwater levels. With that comes a water quality change. At no point during drought or dry years do we see any MCL exceedances. So we may see levels of TDS, total dissolved solids, increase, but all within the range of normal MCL violations. So we are in a continued wet pattern. It's been, water quality's been really good for us the last couple of years. In 1516, we did see those excessive dry years, three- and four-year droughts, and all of those were maintained within the MCLs.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we were going to go into public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. Your microphone will be muted when the time expires. The first speaker I have is Holly.
Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that the city of Brentwood does an excellent job on maintaining safe state water levels. My concerns has always been with the state standards, and I believe we can take action locally to make our water even better. I have previously raised several concerns about contaminants in our water, from fluoride to chrome 6. To put that in perspective, the state of California considers 10 parts per billion of chromium 6 safe, but the EPA once set a safe level at .01 parts per billion, later addressing it to part, to .02 parts per billion. Meanwhile, we know from the Hinkley case that people exposed to the levels between 1.16 and 20 parts per billion developed cancer. The state is fully aware this is a problem, but addressing it would be expensive, and so they leave it, the higher limits in place. Okay, so now for the real bombshell. The state passed AB 967 in 2017, legalizing what's called water cremation. And California is one of, I put 14, but I found out it's over 20 states to allow it. Many people assume that when a loved one is cremated, the body is entirely burned and the ashes are returned to the family. That's not the case here. In water cremation, the body is dissolved in a chemical solution until it becomes a liquid. The bones are removed, burned, and given to the family. And the remaining liquid, which can contain residues from chemotherapy, radiation, heavy metals, or even drugs, is not stored in as hazardous waste. It is simply poured down the drain. The liquid flows into wastewater treatment plants, which are not equipped to treat for radiation or many of these substances. The treated water is then used to irrigate parks and released into creeks and rivers. This same water ways from which cities draw drinking water. While Brentwood gets its water from Discovery Bay, other communities' upstreams and downstreams are directly impacted, and ultimately, all of us are connected through the water cycle. The truth is, every city uses treated wastewater in some form, but the state isn't testing for many dangerous contaminants. This is why Brentwood should take action on our own. One solution would be contracting with a company to install whole-house reverse osmosis systems for residents or requiring builders to include RO systems in all new homes, just as we require parks with new subdivisions. In addition, we really need to look at our purple pipe, especially since we are spraying recycled water throughout the parks, which can be harmful forever chemicals in areas children play at. If the state won't protect us, then we have the responsibility to protect ourselves. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person, but I do have one hand raised in Zoom. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, council and staff. I just wanted to take this time to say the city of Brentwood Water Operations Department is amazing. When Casey, before he was director, he gave me and Owen, both then youth commissioners, Owen's still Youth Commissioner, a tour of the water sewer plant. And just seeing the technology that Brentwood implements in everything we do, because we're a newer and modern city, and also because prior councils decided to do everything in-house instead of working with Contra Costa Water District, we have such an ability to make sure we're on top of our public health. And as a public health student, understanding the needs of crucial water and everything, Brentwood, I'm sure, is top tier in California, and I never worry about my drinking water here unlike I do when I'm down in, near my Peru, which, if you're down in Peru, you don't drink the tap water. You boil the heck of it or go buy water from the store. Even then, it's still iffy. Despite everything that I, there's these laws and stuff, I'm sure Brentwood is incapable to handle anything. And certain situations are very rare, and will barely even be a bit in our data. So I, again, I really appreciate everything Brentwood Public Works does, and can't wait to continue seeing Brentwood flourish and everything. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you, Amanda. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any council discussion on this item? Okay, in that case, we need a motion.
As, sorry. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving the 2025 Public Health Goal Report on Drinking Water.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Thank you. Moving into business items, Ricardo Noguera, Economic Development Manager, will present the Economic Development Semiannual Report.
You got 10 minutes, Ricardo.
As my team member, Abraham, gets set up. I just want to make sure everything is. Yeah. So as he's setting up, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name's Ricardo Noguera. I'm the Economic Development Manager, and I'm joined by Abraham Salinas, the Senior Economic Development Analyst. It is with great pleasure that staff presents council with the first semiannual economic development report for 25, 2025. If you recall, we presented to you last July. That was the first report we presented. There's a lot of economic development, movement occurring across the San Francisco Bay Area and nationally. A few trends to share with you, which you're probably hearing on television daily. The first is tariffs, and they're adversely impacting both imports and exports, and ultimately, the consumer market here. Second, higher interest rates. Higher interest rates are making it difficult to finance commercial projects and impacting home buying. The third, and this is regionally, the tech and life science markets are reeling with companies like Google and Meta laying off hundreds of workers and an overbuilt life science market with 30-plus percent vacancies across the Bay Area. And then lastly, office buildings. In suburban markets like Walnut Creek, San Ramon, Pleasanton, San Mateo, we are witnessing demolition of office buildings in favor of multifamily. While the news may appear bleak, the city of Brentwood is, represents an anomaly, a community which is actually experiencing positive growth during these trying times. Over the next few minutes, I will share some good news taking place in this city. Once I can get to the next. There we go. So the, 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 the report consists of six areas that I'll be highlighting. The first is business attraction and development. The focus here is on attracting a diverse mix of industries to grow the local tax base, create quality jobs, and improve retail and dining options for residents, and minimize sales tax leakage. That's when our folks are driving to Concord, to the Veranda, to Bishop Ranch, and spending their money there. We lose money that way. So the goal here is to attract retailers, restaurants, and industry so our tax dollars stay local. A few examples of projects that we've worked on over the past six months. The first is a new industrial building, which was approved for construction in the Harvest Commerce Center right off of Brentwood Boulevard. The second, and many of you were there, was the opening of Barnes &amp; Noble at Streets of Brentwood. Now, folks may say, well, it moved just from Slatten Ranch. It filled a storefront at Streets of Brentwood that had been vacant for 15 years. That was key. Moving along further, and here's something, here's a statistic to really share with the council. For every industrial or tech job created, approximately three to five retail jobs are created. So diversifying our commercial and industrial base is key. And two examples I'll highlight right here. That first building there is a new industrial building scheduled to break ground this fall on Technology Way. And the second is a planned light industrial building on the last remaining three-acre parcel in the Sunset Industrial Park that is in the planning stages. I know over the past several months, there's been a lot of discussion about the Brentwood Boulevard corridor and what's happening. I'm going to share with you over the next couple of slides of what is taking place on the east side of town, and a lot of folks on the west side of town, we have a lot of traffic challenges. Everyone's driving west. Well, I'm very excited to hear, share with you some investment opportunities, investment plans. Over the next few years, the stretch of Brentwood Boulevard, the Brentwood Boulevard corridor south of Sand Creek Road will witness approximately $500 million. That's one-half billion in public and private investments. Most recently, Golden State Orthopedics completed Most recently, Golden State Orthopedics completed the construction of Phase Two at that shopping center at Sand Creek Road and Brentwood Boulevard. Over ninety professionals are now working in that building that you sold to Golden State Orthopedics so that local residents who are traveling to Walnut Creek can work local. If you drive by that center now in the middle of the day, you can see a parking lot full of folks. Two new restaurants have just opened up. In addition to that, further south, at Baufour and Brentwood Boulevard, the Garren Ranch Retail Center, the New Behavior Health Clinic opened with twenty-five professionals. And that, um, that's the second, um, shot right there. And the key here is that we have a number of restaurants. We have that taqueria, we have the Chinese restaurant, we have the Rib Place, we have Starbucks. They're all feeding off of these professionals who are now working there. It's not just residents who, who may live in the area. It's the workers, white-collar jobs that are there. I mentioned five hundred million coming just south of Sand Creek Road. Well, that first, um, um, aerial you're seeing right there is the Lennar Project. It, um, has not been formally approved. Over five hundred units, a combination of multifamily and townhomes for sale that will be built over the next few years. Immediately adjacent to that, the county is planning to build a hundred and twenty thousand, um, square-foot building, three stories, and bringing in over four hundred office workers. So I mentioned Golden State Orthopedics. I, I mentioned now this use. You have well over five hundred professional workers within a two-block radius that will now be working along that Brentwood Boulevard cor- corridor. If you go by Scortino Ranch, which is the next photo, which was completed last year, if you go by there at lunchtime, there may not be a seat for you. And it will draw more restaurants and retail to this stretch of Brentwood Boulevard. So let's move over to the Innovation Center. The Innovation Center continues to be a central focus of Brentwood's long-term economic development strategy, envisioned as a hub for advanced manufacturing, healthcare, technology, and a mixed-use development. While there may be concerns about the lack of momentum of development, the Economic Development Team is laser-focused on attracting clean tech industry, not logistics, which you see in certain cities along the Four Corridor and further, um, east in Tracy. With limited development opportunities remaining in the city, we will remain on a strategic path to attract the right types of industry which meet the skill sets and character of our community. And that's key. Earlier this year, the city excuse me. Oh, okay. Earlier this year, as you all know, and I want to, uh, um, to the, um, the birthday boy, I want to thank his, his, his team again for extending Sand Creek Road. You all out there that early February morning, cold morning, I was out there with my bicycle. But we extended, the city spent thirteen million dollars to extend that, that Sand Creek Road as an incentive to attract development along the west side of the Innovation Center. In addition to that, the following month, we celebrated the grand opening of the Costco. And I can almost bet you, I'm not a real better, but I can almost bet you a year from now, this Costco will be generating, and Darren, Darren always challenges me on it, will be generating more sales tax than the Concord Costco. This, this Costco is going to do very well. So let's talk about planning and engineering. The specific plan amendment. I know it's been over two years since Darren came to you in November twenty twenty-two and said, we'll be back. Well, we're coming back. We've hired a, um, we brought on the services of de novo, um, planning. We are now working on a plan amendment. We hope to come to you August twenty-six with a high-level, um, high-level, um, recommendations for, for council to consider. And in addition to that, utility easements. The, we, we have agreements with both, um, the nuns and Hauser to extend the utilities from the end of Empire Avenue to the immediate west side of the freeway. And we're hoping that over the coming months, that we can extend those utilities. And again, that'll be another financial incentive for development. Now, when folks ask me, what is the real foundation for economic development? It really starts with taking care of your own. It's business retention and expansion. Looking at the businesses in your town and finding ways to retain them and grow them. That's the easiest, and that is a basic component of any economic development strategy. Well, I, I'm real excited to share, and many of you were at the event last month that, um, Senecal hosted at the Streets of Brentwood. They purchased that center in October twenty twenty-four. And here we are, ten months later, and they're already, um, completing major renovations to that center. From the very beginning, back in early December, I remember meeting with Scott Barr, their Vice President, planning, building, engineering staff, and economic development. We all sat around the table. And Senecal said, we need to complete these improvements and add new restaurants and shops by the end of twenty twenty-five. We all, I remember looking at Eric's face, and Eric was like, oh, you know, this is going to be, it's not easy. Well, over the next four months, from the first week of December, and remember, this is during the holidays, to the end of March, we were able to, with planning leading this, we were able to take them through that entire process. And on April second, the Planning Commission approved their improvements. Well, they're now under construction, as we all know. And that over the next four to five months, you're going to see more shade trees, you're going to see more landscaping, you're going to see four new buildings, and you're going to see more retailers and restaurants so our folks do not have to drive to the Veranda and elsewhere. A few more examples of business retention and expansion. We've been working with, um, one of the owners of, of a building in the Sunset Industrial Park to, um, consider amending their PD, their plan development so that they can support professional office users that want to be in this area. Right now, it's only construction-related users. We also worked with Scholars Academy, which relocated from Baufour Avenue over to the Sunset Industrial Park, replacing a fitness center that had, um, shut down. Downtown. Now, um, downtowns are typically viewed as a centerpiece and image of towns. You show, you look at a downtown, you can, you got a good feel for the city as a whole. It's, it's the heart of the city in many communities. A few examples which have occurred in our downtown. As you know, it's been over a year now since we council approved the, um, agreement for the Women's Club with the DBC. DBC continues, they've had a turnover of executive directors. They continue to make the improvements. I walked through that building a few weeks ago. I was totally impressed. They continue to renovate that building. Secondly, several events have occurred downtown, just most recently, the Juneteenth. It's drawing not only locals, it's drawing visitors from outside the, the city who will continue to come back. I understand there are more thoughts about, um, expanding events elsewhere in town so it can serve as a catalyst for economic development and helping businesses elsewhere. Now, people always wonder, marketing, how is marketing tied to economic development? Well, let me just share a few areas of marketing and outreach that our small economic development team undertakes. The first is a community profile focusing on our demographics and our lifestyles. We, we have a consultant working with us on this. It includes police, engineering, parks and rec, public works, and other departments. That should be finished soon. And we can share that not only with new residents and businesses coming to Brentwood, but as well as the existing residents. In addition to that, we're utilizing a strategic targeting approach to identify high-growth companies in the Pacific Northwest, the Northeast, and other parts of California with similar demographics and land values as Brentwood. We will also soon launch a program to support tech startups. And I've been meeting with some of those folks. In addition to that, we're managing a digital marketing campaign to connect with high-level executives from targeted industries. And then lastly, we participate at a number of conferences, trade shows, events to connect with developers, brokers, and folks in the industries. I understand, um, folks have asked the question, how do we access these marketing videos? If you go to the city's economic development page as part of the city's website, we have three different, um, videos, the Sand Creek Road Extension, the Costco opening, and the Innovation Center. And if anyone, council or members of the public, have challenges finding it, they can just contact me or Abraham. Development projects. This page can easily be accessed on the city's community development, um, page in order for anyone to, um, identify any current projects being reviewed by staff. And then fa- finally, I want to, um, identify the key performance indicators. Since this is the first semi, I don't know who that gentleman is, by the way. This, this is the first, um, semi-annual presentation. We'll come back in early part of twenty-six and compare this first six months with the next six months. Some of the areas we have focused on are business consultations. I want to thank the mayor. She refers a lot of folks to me. Some of these, um, consultations are in person, some of them are on the phone, sometimes we go out and meet with them directly. Developer-broker outreach. Again, this is to promote development and recruitment opportunities locally, regionally, and beyond. Broker tours. I, I did a broker tour with a developer just this morning in San Francisco that I met at a conference, um, last month. It was via Zoom, so he didn't have to come here at first. I'm hoping to get him out here in, in the next few weeks. But we do a lot of broker-developer, um, broker-developer, um, tours via Zoom and in person. And new business licenses. I want to thank the Finance Department for their work in this area. A hundred and seventy-six over the last six months. Community events, fifteen, nearly fifteen thousand people have participated in these events in the past six months. And staff have attended, um, a total of ten conferences and workshops to promote the City of Brentwood. With that, I thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ricardo. The great report.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions?
Oh, no, I, I didn't, I have a question. I just wanted to say wonderful job, and thank you. This is so amazing to have a takeaway, but thank you. I know you do a lot of hard work. I know you, you, you have your own, you, you are the fifth beat of Brentwood. You always drive and pace around. So I, I just wanted to publicly thank you for all your hard work. And, and where is Abraham? Thank him, thank you so much, Abraham, for all your hard wa- work.
Thank you.
I just want to echo that statement. I got a ride-along from you, and it was awesome. So thank you for doing that, for and offering that opportunity also to us. So thank you both for your hard work.
I do have a question, actually. The ag tourism, uh, focus area and the partnership with Harvest Time, what does that look like? Where we are, where are we with, um, cross-promotions of the fruit picking and, you know, coupons for restaurants and stores in town? And like, what kind of focus are we doing on that?
Uh, so the city does have an existing, sorry, thank you for the question, Madam Mayor. Uh, the city does have an existing MOU with Harvest Time. They did announce their big UPIC capital, um, designation, uh, not too long ago. Uh, we've been trying to figure out how to leverage that. We're looking at the MOU and, you know, considering the different parts of it. So we do definitely need to leverage that a little bit better. Uh, but we will be coming back to the Ag Enterprise Committee meeting with more in-depth details, um, even some more, uh, facts and statistics on the performance of the UPIC, uh, farms. Uh, we have some traffic data to share with you as well. And then, of course, the nail property and the long-term vision with that as well.
Thank you. Um, also, in the staff report, there was a, a reference to the Dollar General Retail, Retail Center on Brentwood Boulevard. And most of our retail centers are more named by their location than they are by one specific retailer. And so I'm wondering, I know there's a new owner for that specific retail center. Can we work with that owner to maybe come up with a, a name that's a little bit less specific to one business and maybe a little bit more inviting?
Yes, yes. And, and I've been, I've had a few meetings with him, his general contractor, and now his broker. He's based in Fremont. He owns quite a few shopping centers in San Jose. And you, you know, I drive this core, the, the city regularly. Most centers have a name, including the smaller center just north of there, Sunset Plaza. I don't know why this center didn't have a name, but Abraham and I came up with a new name until we call it the Brentwood Village Drive Center. Very
I like it.
Creative, until, until the new owner comes up with a name.
Yeah, okay. That works. Um, I think that's all the questions I have for now. And if there aren't any others, it looks like we can just move into public comments. Thank you so much. That was very exciting to see.
Mayor Meyer, before you open up, could I ask one question, because I know it'll be
Of course.
Ricardo, could you stand up? Could you explain, uh, the Innovation Center has not seen developments, but there's been logistics that has occurred in Oakley. There's, there's discuss, discussion related to, um, data centers. Could you maybe explain the difference between those type of developments and what the city is going after?
Sure, sure. So, so logistics, if you see, if you're crossing the one sixty bridge, heading to, heading, heading towards Sacramento, and on the east side is Oakley. Oakley has Amazon fulfillment centers and so forth. That's all logistics. And if you go to Tracy down the two oh five, and you see all that land to your south of the two oh five, that's all logistics, warehouse, giant warehouse buildings that are a million square feet plus, a lot of trucks, a lot of truck drivers. You can see it on the five eighty, the Safeway Center, heading towards the five, heading towards Los Angeles. You have it as well. We have limited space here. And, and those jobs that are created there tend to be warehouse and truck driver jobs, don't pay as much. We have a number of tech workers that are moving here to Brentwood, and we're trying to attract the kind of, um, business activity you see along the Dunbarton Bridge in Fremont and Newark, Hayward, and so forth. The data center, um, is, is typically a bunker. And in the past, when I was in Tacoma, I was not supportive of data centers because it's all about IT, and there are very few people working there. However, here, I thought a data center may be useful if I can get them on an acre or two of land to, to attract more technology come. The thing, you got me on a, a roll now, because even when I'm not working, I'm doing economic development. So I'm driving down the one oh one, heading towards the one fifty-two, and to my left and my right, in, um, Morgan Hill, big, beautiful industrial buildings. I spoke to the Economic Development Director down there. I said, you know, I've passed here about three, four times over the past year. I'm not seeing any activity. He said, well, we're waiting for the market to come from San Jose down here. So, and Tramo Crow, by the way, is that developer. I brought them here to Brentwood, and they said, we want to do that type of development here in Brentwood. And I said, unfortunately, that's not the type of development we're looking for. So we're going to keep working hard. I know there are challenges in, in, in the tech sector right now, but we're get, we're getting, we definitely have the tech workers here. You see a future tech worker, um, or tech executive, eleven years old, who just spoke. You're going to see a lot of folks like that continue to move to Brentwood. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving into public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We did not receive any written public comments in advance, and I do not have any speaker cards in person. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I want to just say, this is the first time I really heard about the economic development efforts in the city of Brentwood, and my socks are blown off. I am very amazed at how well the team is trying to promote Brentwood, not just locally, but across the country. You know, moving here about six years ago from Albuquerque, Brentwood was not what it is now. Brentwood is so much more innovative, modern, and early, with new development every day. I cannot wait to just see what continues. And also, I love how Brentwood, it is kind of picking on who we invite to our city. I don't want an Amazon warehouse. I was annoyed when the Amazon trucks used to drive through our city, like, hey, you have a highway. But as the founder of the Future Business Years of America chapter at Heritage High School, bringing these employers will serve great to the youth, because first, your parents will get to live locally. Like, my dad just had to commute to Oakland today for his once-a-month commute. That was a huge burden on me, having to take care of the family. Unlike if his company's office was in Brentwood, it would have been a big burden, because he would be down the street and more flexible. So I hope to see more employers come to Brentwood, so youth can have their parents closer to them, but also to the high schools, this is great internship opportunities, like we see in the San Ramon, Placenton, Dublin areas, or Silicon Valley areas, where I'm competing with those FBLA chapters, where we can't compete, because the employers are right in their backyard, like Apple, NASA, et cetera. So I really hope to see that come to Brentwood, and also they'll provide great opportunity for that club to network with those future employers, and, you know, possibly give Brentwood youth internships, and eventually they can work for them and keep growing families in Brentwood. As much as I love our agricultural background, we need to bring this tech and technology and all these employers to Brentwood to survive to future and continue growing. But again, I appreciate the council and the staff for everything you guys do, and I can't wait to see how Brentwood grows. I, my employer is trying to move from the Sun Valley Mall in Concord. I might tell them, hey, head up Brentwood City Hall, maybe we move over, across Mount Diablo, over to Brentwood. I might tell my regional manager that now in an email. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. Moving into council discussion.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I want to say thank you, Ricardo and Abraham, Darren, because you were a big part of that, and Sakari, now that you're on the team too, I want to say thank you for all of this, I love it. I also want to say I did get kudos for you all last night at the DBC. They're very happy with what they're seeing. Even someone at Acres called me and told me they appreciated you all. So, so I do appreciate it. And National Night Out was interesting, because we usually get a lot of other kinds of questions and feedback. This National Night Out, I got more feedback about our businesses that we're attracting. So you guys are making a difference, and people are seeing it. Everyone had a ton of questions about what was going on in the mall, so I was really excited to tell them what I could. I live over on the other side of town, and I can't tell you how many people are talking about the Poki House and the Tour de Jour. So businesses are coming, and I'm really happy to see it, and I know it's a lot of hard work, but I really appreciate you all for doing what you do. I appreciate this. I think it's going to be great, a marketing tool also to attract other businesses, sending them out to other real estate departments with different companies, I think will be great. So I appreciate you very much, and thank you for all you do, and I can't wait for the mall to be done. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
I want to take just a minute to also thank Ricardo and Abraham both for the hard work. I know I mentioned that I had met someone that was interested, and Ricardo hasn't stopped calling me since then, or every time he sees me, he reminds me, hey, don't forget to give me that name and number. You guys work relentlessly at pushing Brentwood forward and making it a better community, and trying to keep our, our citizens here in the city of Brentwood, working within the city of Brentwood. We appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you very much.
Darren, can you take just a brief moment and talk about the conference, the business conference that's coming in September?
If you don't mind, I'd like Abraham to talk about it, since he's kind of leading the effort.
My pleasure, thanks for the question, Madam Mayor. So, the city has partnered with a local tech company called Redbox, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and a lot of other community leaders, business owners. They actually took the initiative and reached out to us, and they want to put Brentwood on the map even further. We'll be hosting a Contra Costa Business Conference on September 19th. It'll be from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We've just been rolling out the invitations, the tickets. It's known as a business intelligence event. The full agenda will be coming out soon, but we'll be talking everything about growing your business, what technology is being used today, cybersecurity, a great networking opportunity, and we're also looking at different ways to partner with other cities, such as Oakley, Antioch, Pittsburgh, what big projects are coming to our region. And just, it'll be a really great opportunity for any business owner, whether you're just starting out, or you're a mid-sized business, multimillion-dollar revenue. There's a lot to be learned. There was a mini business intelligence event in Walnut Creek this past month, which I was able to attend, and that was a sneak peek into what this is going to be. So again, it's just an attempt to being, bring a big caliber business professional event to Contra Costa County, especially in Brentwood. So we're just really excited to be able to host that, partner with not only the Chamber of the DBC, since downtown, the entire business community, and any regional partners we have. They have really great connections, not just in the, the region, but also across the country. So just really glad to be able to work with those groups and bring this event to Brentwood.
Thank you, Abraham. I have to ask if you, if, I have to double-check the date with you, because I took off September 18th from work. Okay, good.
September 18th, sorry.
Okay. And where can people find more information?
So it's on the city's LinkedIn page, we're blasting it through different social media channels, you can reach out to us directly, the Chamber of Commerce, DBC,
Redbox.
Redbox themselves, we're getting it out there. And we can, you know, stop at City Hall, we can give you more details as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I do have one quick question, and I just remember this. The county offices that are coming, I've gotten feedback from people in, that live over there in District 2, will there be a traffic study? Because we all know traffic is a big topic right now. So will there be a traffic study on what the impact will be down Sand Creek?
So the county, since this is a county property and a county facility, they can actually handle the entitlement on their own. And so that process we're following, I've had regular, or I shouldn't say regular, I've had conversations with the county, and we've asked them to keep us informed through the process. I, I don't know, so I can't say that there's nothing that the city can require them through the process. I guess if there's an environmental process, we can always comment during that. So we're watching it to see where the county is, but they are able to go through the process on their own. So they, they don't have to come and submit to us for a building permit, they'll be able to do that on their own.
Can you send the council memo about that? Because my understanding is they do have to, and there's been cases where, like the city of LA versus the county of LA, there's different cases that, if it's a school, they do not have to, if it's a fire station, they do not have to. But I believe cert, like just office buildings, I believe they do. So we don't have to discuss it now, but if we could get a memo as to why you're saying they don't have to come to us, because my understanding is they do have to come to us.
And I'll piggyback onto that, it was a, Darren and I actually had a meeting with the county supervisor Burgess, Monica Nino, Eric Anstadt. It was a great meeting, I think they were really open to design ideas, discussions about that, and really taking insight on the egress and ingress of where traffic would come into. So they were very, Darren had a lot of great points that he hit during that meeting, so they were very open to it.
Because if that was the case, they wouldn't have had to come up, come to us for a design review, right? And they had to come to us for a design review?
That's a different issue, it was actually a fire district versus the county.
Okay.
Okay. If there is no other discussion, is there a motion? Oh, there's no motion. Okay. Well, moving on to item G2, Alan Bacalar, Director of Engineering, will present an update on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Lawn and Event Center.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Tonight, myself, along with Harith Alim, Parks and Rec Director, and Aaron Forbes, the architect for the project, will be presenting the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center update. For this evening's item, staff is recommending that City Council receive an update on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center slash Amphitheater Project. Discuss and provide direction regarding the event lawn amenities and the event slash Performing Arts Center, including the use of associated funds. It's a quick recap, here's the project timeline. Speaking of birthdays, this one was sort of born in 2004, started with the evaluate, this project being evaluated and included as part of the Marsh, Vineyards at Marsh Creek development. Highlighting the second item became a city project with funding included through a development agreement in 2012. And in 2021, the city hired an architect and environmental consultant to take us through the design and supplemental, subsequent EIR process. It was during this time, as the designs were beginning to take shape, that we received an updated estimate from the architect, where it was not staying within the budget that we secured back in 2012. Going to council in 2024, City Council provided direction to consider a revised, or they gave direction to staff for a revised Phase 1, which we're calling the Event Lawn. And also to come back with additional sort of amenities and list of options to, for council to consider before designs were finalized on the event lawn. And then, on 2025, earlier this year, the City Council received an update with renderings of the event lawn, and provided additional direction to staff to explore the event center and incorporate an event center in the Phase 1. Here's a project site, which is located just above Vineyard Parkway, between John Marsh House to the south and Reserve Drive to the north, and the rest of it surrounded by state parklands to the west and southwest. Here is the total project overview, highlighting the three different phases we're considering. So Phase 1 is the event lawn, which is a reduced parking lot, and a sort of a box office area, this is now just a restroom and shaded canopy. It includes the open lawn, playground space, no longer a wedding space, but we're going to have a sort of a little stage for performances to occur on the lawn area. Phase 2 is now the amphitheater down below, and Phase 3, the event center, currently unfunded. Highlighting again the event lawn, we're talking about 81 parking stalls, the outdoor shade canopy, restrooms, food trucks, staging area, approximately 32,000 square foot event lawn, and a coverage stage. The good thing about this Phase 1 is it does not conflict with the future phases, as I shown earlier. And as the project further builds out Phases 2 and 3, the parking lot can be further expanded as well. Here is the renderings that was provided at the last council meeting, showing the event lawn space, highlighting the features I just described. Here's another view of the lawn area, and here's one from ground level towards the stage. Council provided direction to explore options and, and consider including the event center with the Phase 1 development, or the event lawn. Currently, staff had received renderings from the architect, which showed the event center to some capacity. So here it is, here's one of the renderings with the event center pointed out. And here's another view of the event center as viewed from the shade canopy area. Project funding, currently, we have a total of $9.4 million made up between the Vineyards Project Fund, the Vineyards Event Center Fund from the developer, and a portion of it from the Public Art Acquisition Fund. Currently, we have expenditures and encumbrances to date of $636,000, which leaves the remaining, remaining of eight points, or 8,764,000 to be used towards the project, or Phase 1 of the project. The current estimate, which I'll get into more detail later, for the complete Phase 1 and include a 5% contingency, is $8,705,043. I also want to point out that we have unallocated funds available for, to be designated for the project if needed, of $584,000. This is made up of interest accrued, and as well as fees collected from development within the area. Here's an outlook and estimate for the operations and maintenance of the different phases of the project. The event lawn, Phase 1, is estimated to be about $70,000 a year. Phase 2 is the amphitheater, that would bring the total annual maintenance to $300,000 a year, and the event center at $400,000 a year total. If we were to include Phase 3 with Phase 1, we're looking at something in the, in between 70 and 300,000. We haven't had that really analyzed just yet, but you can expect that figure to be around that, between that range per year. At this point, I'll hand it over to the architect, Aaron Forbes, to go over the base scope and considered additions and deductions possibly.
Sure, thank you, Alan. So as Alan has illustrated with the, within the base scope, one of the largest pieces of the site development is bringing the utility infrastructure up to the site to, to support any future phases that are there. So this, this project, even though the canopy itself may not be as, as robust as some of the future phases, it does a lot of the legwork to make the other phases feasible. So that's in that, in that top number up there. Some of the other things that we had looked at were enhanced landscaping, and so enhanced landscaping here, it's the enlargement of any tree that's brought on site. So we went, instead of a 24-inch box, we went to a 36-inch box, and then from a 48-inch box, we went to a 72-inch. So immediate shade, once the project is complete, would be provided by the larger trees. We've also increased the density of the planting and the quantity of the planting, so it looked like a site that would have been a little bit more robustly developed, once the, the project opens day one. Other options we're studying would be to cover the proposed 81 spaces with solar, this would be about 12,500 square feet of solar canopy. Current building code also requires us to store that power on-site. You would be generating enough power to easily power the entire Phase 1 project, and you would have additional power capacity for future projects, if Phase 2 or 3, should those go forward. We have also included covering approximately 50% of the 6,000 square foot playground with a steel and tensile canopy shade structure, so that we can keep the equipment underneath in a more temperate environment, so that's about 3,000 square feet of shade canopy. We have provided an opportunity for some enhanced theatrical stage lighting that would be portable and could be brought out in the, in, when an event would take place, and then obviously stored onsite when not in use, so that we could protect it. Another enhancement that we looked at would be some traffic control down at the entrance to the facility from the, the main road, and that traffic control is broken out individually here. And then, some additional enhancements would be Wi-Fi that would be able to be accessed by the public onsite, and then video surveillance that would be available to make sure that the parking lot and canopy spaces, covered spaces, would be covered. Other things that the design team looked at to potentially help reduce costs would be the restroom building. Right now, the project, within the project budget, is a restroom building accustomed to the canopy structure size, and an additional storage building associated with it. We looked at a prefabricated restroom building, which would save the project approximately $124,000. We would try and get the materiality of that building to match, in general, what we were doing with the canopy, so it didn't look like a foreign object onsite, but would be prefabricated, and limit some of our design capability. And the other thing we looked at was a prefabricated waterless restroom building. So this would eliminate the need for potable water or waste, and it would also, again, be prefabricated, so that we would have a little bit less design agency to make it integrate with the canopy, but nonetheless, would offer would offer a significant potential savings with the understanding of some of the things that come with a waterless restroom facility that would the city would need to maintain a little bit differently than its traditional restroom building. Here we see some of the work which may describe more of the capacity on the left. So we're talking about an event lawn of about 32,000 square feet and a structure similar to what you have on the left. It would have a little bit more form. So where the one on the left is rather transparent, the one that is proposed for the event lawn would look a little bit more like the structure on the right. It would be a little bit more enclosed. It would have a roof, a solid roof, which could support some of that portable lighting and public address system. And then the lawn itself. The image on the right is of a facility that's slightly larger or actually about twice the size of what is proposed for the Brentwood event.
Thank you, Aaron. So with that, council's direction that staff is seeking tonight is, you know, we laid out a couple or a few options here. The first one is for council to direct staff to proceed with phase one of the project with additional direction regarding unallocated funds and amenity and which amenities to include or not include. If given this direction, kind of next steps for staff would be to award a new contract for design completion of the phase one, and then and also complete the subsequent EIR process, which is currently on hold. And then eventually, once we're ready and the EIR is done and the design's ready, we would go out to award the contract for construction. Option number two is to forego phase one, to reserve and explore options and to add funding for an event center or alternative facilities such as a performing arts or black box theater. Similarly, we would complete the subsequent EIR, since that one still in process. And we could complete that EIR with the understanding that we would move either the event center or a performing arts or black box theater forward, and that we could wrap up the analysis there and complete that process. And then we would, at that point, pause until additional funding is identified, or receive further direction from city council. And then option number three would be any other option as directed by city council. With that, I do have a spreadsheet ready if we want to go into the various amenities that we can pick and choose, and we can see how the numbers change as we go along. Otherwise, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Alan. Do we have questions?
I have one question. I don't know if Alan or maybe Darren could answer this, but obviously, we have an allocated funding for this project that's supposed to just be used at that specific location for this. Have we looked at public private partnerships that would help where we would allocate the money forward, but they take over the design, the building with some of our input, and then they take over maintenance costs in the future?
I'll give it a shot. I may hand it over to Darren. I am not aware of any efforts to do that. Do we have explored and kind of kept an eye open or ear open for private opportunities, partnerships? To my but to my knowledge, and with the previous Parks and Rec director, I don't think there was any success in that regard. But Darren, if you have anything, have anything?
Alan answered it well. If the council wanted to pursue that type of opportunity, it's not something that the city of Brentwood has done. Our neighboring community is trying to do it with their local library. And the idea is that you bring in a developer and either they're helping finance it, finance it, and you're paying rent, or they you provide them funding and then they help run it and and they see it as a revenue generator for them for the services being provided in that building. So if the council did want to go down that that road, we could definitely pursue it. There's I was looking here in the last 24 hours to try to find if I could find in California performing arts theater that had gone through what they call a P3, public private partnership. But I was yet to find one, but it wasn't an exhaustive search. I did not ask any type of AI. I just was doing some research, looking through the league of California cities and some of the assets that we have at our fingertips. But but that is something that we could continue to pursue.
I found three on my research, but I don't want to trust what the internet's saying until I actually call those venues. So.
I was the same way. I don't want. There was something I saw, but I'm like, I'm not sure. So I just.
Absolutely.
Until that's finalized.
Thank you.
I have a question about the operations and maintenance expense. So we see that there's an expense there. But what about the incoming revenue if we have an event center, for example, and we're renting it out, whether it be for plays or weddings or whatever the case may be, just like we do the community center? Have we looked at how much the expenses will be offset?
Councilmember Mendoza, the there was there were two feasibility studies previously done, one for the event center, but that was dated way back in 2008 ish, I think, according to my timeline. And the other more recent feasibility study was for the amphitheater. My recollection was that the the O N M that's presented, phase three is currently the event center. It was only adding, let's say, $100,000 more in O N M. It's because, from what I recall from the feasibility studies, the event center did was in greater demand. And I think it could be used more often for things like weddings, a lot more venue, you know, things like corporate events and those kind of things. So it was a little bit more cost recovery, but it did help. And then the amphitheater, on the other hand, I think there were challenges due to its location, its size, where it wasn't quite as big a draw. And that's why it had a bigger O N M cost once it came in. So I believe the O N M figures did have that accounted for.
There's I just wanted to understand that this dollar amount doesn't deduct any revenue that we would be bringing. This is just straight expenses, but no revenue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, I'm looking at Kerry shaking his head. No.
So good evening. The study originally showed various revenue scenarios. And I think Alan was hinting at that where there were certain uses that would generate more revenues and certain uses that would be more challenging. And my recollection is this was the net number that we would have to come up with. So this is revenues minus expenses, and we're short this amount. Yes.
And also, if I can add, both Alan and Hrit this past week actually visited a black box or event center. The closest one nearby to us was actually West Sacramento. And we're waiting to get some information from them to get an idea of what what type of revenue they're receiving as a result of their facility to kind of see a real life experience that we can can use and update our numbers.
Another question, and I think there's a there's some confusion in the general public about pots of money and how they can be used. And I think this this one has been specifically called out as well. Why are you spending this money here when we have an issue over here that needs help? Or can you talk a little bit about the designation of the funds specific to this area and this and this particular kinds of project?
May have to defer to Kerry on this one.
Sure. So we have three pieces here. One is a contribution directly from Vineyards Project itself, from the developers. There was a development agreement way back when that stipulated they would contribute money to this or some variation of this project, which is what we're talking about here tonight. So those funds are really required to stay in this location, not necessarily this iteration, but at this location. Then we have development impact fees that were paid by units that were built in the Vineyards area. We allocated them to this project. Those fees do not necessarily have to stay there. So they were broken out on the slide. I think that one was about 5 million, whereas the contribution was closer to 4 million. And that's what those two numbers are referencing. It's a little small for me to see, but that's the the general idea. Now, the public art, of course, can be used for any public art project. And we did generate some investment income. So we are not able to take these and fund another facility. We are required to utilize the funds in this general area, especially the funds that were contributed by the developer. Then we do have some ability with some of the other funds, but not for operations or for those sorts of things. Not at all.
Thank you, Kerry. Appreciate that clarification. Any other questions before we move to public comment? Okay.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please file speaker card with the city clerk. Your microphone would be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. I do have one comment in person. Melissa?
Good evening. I wasn't actually planning to speak, but here I am. I personally, and I know it's maybe a little more set in stone than this, I would love to see maybe the phases swapped. I would love to see an event center first and foremost. We have spaces right now in the city where outdoor performances can take place. And yes, it's beautiful and a bigger space obviously would be a great goal for the future. However, we do not have a city owned space other than our high schools, which are used by the high school performing arts groups, that people can come in and have a performance space. We have choruses, we have bands, we have theater groups that don't have their own spaces to come and perform. So it'd be really nice to see kind of the focus on that. That being said, as somebody who has spent my entire life in the arts and am still involved in the arts, I love the idea of these stage lights that you can take away and put back. However, what I don't think, and with all due respect, the man hours that it actually takes to do this for performances, because you're not only taking the lights out and putting them up, but certain performances have certain requirements in their riders, and you have to focus the lights specifically. And it literally takes entire days sometimes, just depending on the needs of each performance. So that is just something on the, you know, the budget end. Who does that? What, you know, what are they paid? That's something to factor in there as well. So maybe finding some way, you know, I know that these these lights, they're very expensive. So leaving them out is not an option either. But, you know, figuring out a way to make that more accessible would be great. But my last point is like the parking. We just saw in the economic development, how many people come out to our events downtown? 81 parking spaces aren't going to do it. Thank
I have no additional cards in person. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. Nina, go
Good evening. I just wanted to weigh in as a performing arts center owner in in the city. We absolutely need a theater to be able to use. You have multiple performing arts based businesses in town. And using the theaters at the high schools and the junior highs is incredibly difficult and sometimes not available at all. Secondly, you somebody commented or was presenting on looking for other event centers or or black box theaters, and that the closest one was in Sacramento. I just wanted to bring to the attention that it at the city of Tracy, they have the Grand Theater, which is, I believe, a city ran theater, where they have a very large theater. Plus, they also have a black box theater within their facility. There's also a black box theater in Livermore. And I someone also was talking about how that they're looking for theaters that were ran by private entities. So the Pittsburgh California Theater is ran by a private entity, and it is a city theater. Just wanted to weigh in with my two cents on on those topics. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Marisol. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. The renderings are beautiful. I just wanted to say that. I feel like a broken record. When I bought my home 20 years ago, I was told about this amphitheater. And I think it's such a value add. And I hope that you can say yes to this and move it forward. I think it's great for our community. I think it's great for our city to bring additional people to come in. So I would actually love to see this come through, you know, another thing that I was promised 20 years ago when I purchased my home to actually finally happen. So thank you so much for listening to this. And again, the renderings are beautiful, and I hope we can make this happen. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ian. Go ahead.
You know, I'm a sucker for parks and rec in the city of Brentwood, but also I'm a big sucker for economic development. And with how high cost this is and our crucial need for economic development, I encourage the city council to do whatever phase first that will bring us the most sales tax revenue and generate the most revenue for the city, but also find that balance that meets the most needs for the city. We already have enough parks, but we need more spaces that really make Brentwood fun. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Moving into discussion, who would like to go first?
If I had a vote right now, I wouldn't see what it's like to do the parking lot. Okay, does the event center have bathrooms inside?
The event center, yes, I believe it.
Okay. So I think for me, I would like, I think we're short on spaces. People always say they need more spaces to have events. So like the theater weddings, you know, just events in general. So I I would like to see the parking lot and the event center. That's what I would prefer. I think that it would meet a lot of different needs. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a theater that has seats, but I think something that where we could remove the seats and kind of pivot the space depending on the need, I think, would so it's always rented. Like if it has seats and we're not having shows, then it's it's empty. But if we could have something that we can pivot to meet different needs and have it rented so that it pays as much as it can on its own, I that's what I would like to see.
Other discussion?
When when we originally started talking about this a couple months back, I was interested in moving forward. And Pat Nisha or I'm sorry, the vice mayor had brought up a an option, which was the parking lot and then the opportunity to have either farmers markets up there and open air events up there that could continue and start putting the infrastructure in place so that we could expand it as money became available. And it, as opposed to just letting that money sit there and wait, and the cost of construction continued to go up, I thought it was a great idea. Having sat with staff and discussed the security of this site well off of the main road, the upkeep of the lawn and the stage area, along with there is a much smaller, nowhere near the same size, but like 1,000 feet away, there's Pioneer Park. Is that what it was, Darren? That has a small stage and lawn area for outdoor events to for performances. I'm leaning a little bit more towards the parking lot, black box movie, not movie, I'm sorry. I did not mean to say that, theater concept with still having the infrastructure to continue to grow it into the other parts of this.
I'm a huge fan of performance of performance arts. And I do believe that is a space that we do lack here. And having a black box type of theater would add more to our community, especially in that area. We have a lot of parks. We also have our downtown city park area for outdoor concerts and whatnot. I do believe we do lack that here in our city. And it would be amazing to have that. So that is something for me that I would like to explore is a parking lot and a black box event center.
So when we first brought this up, there were complaints by someone that we use our park too much and the grass is damaged. Yeah. So and we there my first thought, we live in Brentwood and it gets triple digits. And so I thought the idea of us having an outdoor space initially was a difficult idea to wrap my mind around. So when I when I talked about us doing the phase and the order of having the enclosed space or the black box theater, I was told then that we may not have enough money to fund that type of project based on what we have. So I came up with an idea on the fly. And that was, can we just have this area where we can have the food truck? So I came up with an idea on the fly, and that was can we just have this area where we can have the food trucks, where we can have all these things, where we can congregate? And it was, I think it was like right after COVID, if I'm not mistaken. So this was a great idea and concept after COVID. That being said, I have some issues. The designs are nice, the renderings. I never understood, I think I brought this up at the last meeting, why the shaded area was to the side of the stage and you couldn't see the stage directly on. So I always had an issue with that. But I think after hearing what, and then also, I'm not okay, I know one of the staff recommendations was wait, but we've been waiting 21 years. And I don't want to see people wait another 21 years where their children are still waiting to get this amphitheater space. So for me, I think the enclosed space, the event center, would be the go-to, especially after we just heard Ricardo give a presentation. And the idea that we're doing all this stuff by way of economic development, and when Madam Mayor, you brought up giving a report out on this tech-type seminar here, my first thought was, oh my God, where do we host something like that? And I just went to a seminar by one of our transportation agencies where they invited, I mean, it was like, I think there was somebody from our engineering department was there. I mean, there was people from every area all throughout the district. And it was in San Ramon, and it was in a nice tech, a big building where we can host corporate events. We can have theater, some of the black box theater ideas. And it does get congestion, even though we have that, you know, shared use agreement. I don't know that we even get to use some of the school spaces. It was nice when I first got on, I got to, my husband and I went to the Getty's Theater. We saw Aladdin, and that was nice. And I was so excited to go into one of our theaters. But again, to have more spaces like that, that other outside partners can use besides the school district, that would be my recommendation to have that. And to have something that looks like the field, we want to get into this area where we're inviting corporate partners, but we don't even have hotels for them to have receptions at. We don't have the spaces for people to have larger-sized events. So I would wholeheartedly support us doing something in a more closed, enclosed space. I still have reservations about the amphitheater down low. I always go back to the ADA issues that we may foresee. Even when I saw this photo, as beautiful as the rendering, I think Marisol talked about how beautiful the rendering is, and I have to agree with her, it is beautiful. But every time I look at one of the renderings, I look at, and I think about our senior population right there in that area trying to make it down that location. I think about our differently-able population trying to make it down there, and I think about how much more that would cost us. So the amphitheater would be something I would want to grow to, but I just, I'm concerned also about, we've had complaints about noise and lighting pollution. And so we take those things into consideration. So the event center would be my vote tonight, if that's something we can accomplish that doesn't cause a burden on our budget.
So I'm actually really thrilled at the direction this conversation is going. I'm a theater kid. I've been performing my whole life in several black box theaters. So this is close to my heart. And I would say, one of the issues with using school theaters, of course, is that they are not, the schools don't allow for theater companies to use the space for a whole show run. They have to remove everything from the stage and put it back for the next performance. And that is a huge lift, takes a lot of extra time. And I think it's not necessarily worth it for them to invest that kind of usage when they know there's so much extra work involved. So I definitely would support the idea of a black box theater. I do think we have to make sure that lighting and sound is included in that. That's not, that's not an option if it's an indoor theater. You certainly can't have a production company in there without any kind of lights or sound. So I think, I do like Councilmember Mendoza's ideas about potentially having seats that are movable. And I remember, I think it was Freedom, that for the longest time, was it Freedom? They didn't have a theater, and so they were doing that. They had a stage, but they just kept moving the chairs in and out. And so I think that's entirely feasible. They would have to be nice chairs, they'd have to be placed appropriately. But if the space was big enough to use it for other services and other uses, then we're bringing in more revenues. The only hesitation I have with this whole thing is that if there is a performance, black box theater there, and there's no close-by restaurant, that's a little bit tricky, because people tend to go to a restaurant right before. So if there's a way to still incorporate the food truck area along with the parking, then that would be a priority that I would want to focus on, too. I don't know if we're saying the black box would be the exact kind of a switching off as the outdoor theater, the outdoor venue, I should say. I'd like to see what that looks like, but I would very much support that idea. And we definitely know, we've been hearing for a long time from people about this shortage, but there's a gap here for that.
Just one quick question. Could we just do food trucks in the parking lot?
As long as we have no parking, absolutely. I mean, we have to talk about, too, like how many seats are we looking at? Black boxes are, you know, they tend to be smaller theaters, they're not necessarily the size of a high school theater. But do we have any kind of sense of what we could, what the area would support and the funding would support?
Yeah, so a great conversation, and appreciate the council having this conversation together. One of the things I want to highlight, number one, there's been discussion of event center and black box theater. Those are two different types of things. To give you an idea, a black box theater many times might be 50 by 50, the building. They're not, they're not large. They hold, there's no windows on the inside of a black box theater, hence the reason why they're called black box theaters. Or there has to be some type of pipe and drape that keeps out the light. And the idea is that you don't have permanent fixtures on the ground. Everything is taken in and out. Catwalks on top that allow for the installation of lights and other type of equipment to support the events. So although it might be able to hold other events, you know, maybe a wedding, maybe a seminar, 50 by 50 is not a large space where it's going to hold hundreds of people. I just want to make sure, and I think the council got that. Also, as it relates to parking, we are immediately adjacent, very close to a college that that parking lot is always empty. I'm not saying it's walking distance, but it's definitely distance where people could easily carpool back and forth and move people from an existing parking lot. If we had the funding, we could obviously build a massive parking lot to fully support everything. So it's really going to come down to trying to find a project, which we have a great architect and a great planner that's working on this, that matches our budget. And the whole idea would be that you could always grow from whatever initial space is there. Alan did mention this, a big portion of the cost is, no matter what you do, grading, extension of utilities, it's very expensive. We just built, we're building three soccer fields. It's costing $20 million. The movement of dirt and the compaction of dirt and making sure we have the right dirt does cost money. And the utilities extension will be a lot. So once the council makes a final decision tonight and gives us clear direction, council, we can provide a timeline of coming back of exactly, you know, what we can or cannot afford. We might come back and say it's 15, 20 million. Hopefully not. We're excited. But we just want to, you know, manage expectations with the city council this evening.
What was the size of the event center that is in this project?
10,000 square feet.
And you said 50 by 50 for black, so what's the dimensions on it?
That's only 250, wait, 2,500 square feet. Aaron, I have Aaron online. He has some experience with black box theaters. If you're interested in hearing from him, as well as to, you know, typical sizes.
I just don't know if I want something that is all blacked out inside. I want something that is a little bit more flexible. So if it has curtains that come down and like blackout curtains or something. But I want something that, you know, I don't want something that's, I just want it busy. Yeah. So I don't know how everyone else feels about that.
And if I can just clarify, I'm using like absolute statements. I bet you someone would say, well, I know a black box theater has windows. Absolutely. We're just using just general standards. And so I think as you have discussions here, we can work with our architects to come up with ideas based upon our budget. And there'll be a front of house, back of house. And I definitely think one of the things that we need to do before we come back or finalize is that we have some type of survey with what is the true demand? How often are they willing to use it? And how much are they willing to pay? Because we have lots of groups that come in here, and they always ask to use our facilities for a lower cost. So that'll be part of the analysis before we bring it back to city council.
A survey would necessitate more funding for the survey.
No, we can do just an easy survey with our, internally with staff, asking questions with our performing arts theater groups of, you know, what type of facility are they looking for? What's their needs? What's their timeframes? How much money are they willing? And that can be done internally with just staff time and resources. I don't want to slow down or spend additional money. No.
All right, well then I'd like to make a motion.
He said he had a plug and play with the dollars. Can we go, how much was the dollars for the event center that you have? And just the parking lot? And we see that real quick?
I don't quite have that. The spreadsheet I had ready was just for Phase 1, which was just the event lawn area. Adding the event center currently was, you know, we had estimated at 9 million.
But 9 million was the event center alone?
That was the event center, if you were, you know, we still have to build Phase 1, because Phase 1 provides the utilities, the parking lot and all that. And the event center phase would expand that parking lot as well as build the event center.
So then we would remove the mini-stage, I'm going to call it the mini-stage, that lawn area, that shaded, all of that goes away, and it's just a path down to the event center? Is that what we're talking about?
That, or we could, you know, through our analysis, depending on direction, we could look at relocating that event center and place it where that lawn is currently, closer to the parking lot.
Just put it up there instead?
So those are options to.
Would that lower the cost?
Potentially would, but then the event center is cost differently from a black box theater. I think black box theater is a little bit, a little bit more as far as cost goes. But theoretically, yes, because it would be closer to the parking lot. We don't have to go out towards where the event center is currently designated. That could be a potential savings.
And then would that potentially include a bathroom? Because a theater needs a bathroom.
Yes, the black box theater we revisited, it had like its own green room and restrooms. So yes, of course, it would have a restroom.
What are your thoughts about a private-public partnership? Like, what are your guys' thoughts about that?
I'm not interested in that, really. I'm just, I like the city having control of what happens. There's times we have leases and they don't go right.
I think it's a good idea. I'm open to us getting some, I don't want to be a closed door to an idea that may either reduce cost, but I think it would be good for them to come back to tell us more about management of a project like that versus, I don't know. I think partnership, I would take it a little different. And also, I would be concerned about that delay in this project a little bit longer would be my main concern with us moving forward. But for the management of it, I think one of the callers talked about the theater in Pittsburgh is a city-owned theater, they said, and said that it's managed by someone else. So I would be interested in finding out how that cost would vary versus us managing it. You know, because I don't know if our new director here would have any idea eventually in the future to talk more about staff time and if you even have the manpower to man something like a theater. So that will be something to consider in our future, if we do need to outsource it or if we can do it in-house.
Or even the level of expertise needed to manage a theater.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I've seen some theaters that are managed by nonprofits and some private entities while paying a lease to the cities. So that's kind of where I was thinking.
I think it would be interesting to at least gather some of the information and not going out getting a survey about how this could work. But anytime we can get somebody else to help us either manage for staff purposes, taking a little bit of the work off, but also maybe even in the funding of the build, depending on what the cost of that is going to be, at least let's ask the questions as opposed to shut it down.
And are we calling it theater slash event center? Like, how are we going to market this, right? Because that, what we call it, comes into play when our staff goes and markets it. So whatever we're going to call it, we should probably start playing with that, too.
Yeah, once we go back and get ideas of cost and then come back to you and you finalize a project, it might be, you might not be able to afford an event center slash black box theater. You might be able to afford just one or the other.
And we can always just call it the Davis Pearson Event Center, and that's fine. We can drop the Davis, and my husband here will be even more, just the Pearson Event Center works.
Was that a motion?
I love my name on there, too. All right, well, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor. I make a motion for staff to spend time and resources to move forward with bringing back more details and information for the creation and design and development and construction of a 10K or close to square foot event center with ideas about the cost associated with such, possibly moving it forward in the parking lot, a parking space, also more information if we can add a food truck area, what that cost associated would be or not. And also giving us more information about partnership or management by a third party or some other connection.
Friendly amendment, did you want to mention the black box potential?
No, and I thought we would.
Well, it's a slash, like event. We were talking about multiple uses.
I thought there was a no up here, but okay. I'm a no for black box, but a theater, yeah. Theater and event center, theater and/or event center, in all second thought.
All, wait, staff clarifications or?
No, I'm very clear.
Do you have any questions related to that direction?
No, I'm clear.
All right, all in favor?
I've got a quick question. I'm so sorry. So just so my notes are correct, so a theater, you had talked about a black box theater in terms of, Darren had suggested 50 by 50 was the typical size, but you're leaving the size of the theater space up to whatever staff and the consultant can make work for this budget and bring back to you as an option. We're not limited to that 50 by 50 or anything like that.
Absolutely not. I think we want something bigger than that anyway. Because I think we're saying theater slash event.
Okay, all in favor?
Still second thought.
And the item moves forward. Thank you. Okay, item G3. Hareth Aleem, Director of Parks and Recreation, will present the next item regarding the pickleball and tennis courts at Creekside Park, as well as updates on potential alternative pickleball sites. Thank you, Hareth.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hareth Aleem, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before you tonight, with the staff report, pickleball courts' hours of operation at Creekside Park update and updates on alternative pickleball court sites. Staff recommend city council receive the report, discuss and provide direction on Vice Mayor Pearson's request to adjust the current hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and provide direction on possible alternative pickleball court sites. There's no fiscal impact associated with discussion of this agenda item. It is estimated that the current annual cost associated with opening and closing the pickleball courts is approximately $24,000 annually. The general fund is the source of funding for hours of operating staff costs. And a mid-year operating budget amendment request will be presented to city council in January of 2026. The Creekside Park pickleball courts were originally identified as a strategic initiative in the fiscal year 2020-21, 2021 strategic plan, but the project was delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In July of 2023, the city council awarded a construction contract, and the courts were completed in August of '24. Following completion, staff presented an operational update to the Parks and Recreation Commission in August of '24. Based on the commission's feedback, several adjustments were made to enhance safety, accessibility, and the PM. Help meet community demand, temporary pickleball courts are also established at Pioneer Park and are available for limited use. While the Creekside Park pickleball courts have proven to be extremely popular, nearby residents continue to raise concerns about noise. In response, staff researched mitigation options and presented them to city council. On March 25, 2025, the council took the following action. You adjusted the court hours to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., directed staff to lock and unlock the courts daily, requested recommendations for future pickleball court locations outside of residential areas. So looking ahead to minimize impact on residential neighborhoods, staff does not recommend placing additional courts in or adjacent to residential areas. This limits, obviously, this limits potential locations. However, staff has identified property behind Sunset Park, adjacent to the city's municipal service center, as a promising location where multiple new courts could be developed pending available funding. Staff will conduct further work to estimate and develop cost and include this information in council's next strategic planning session. If the city council was to authorize funding for new courts, it's estimated that the design, sequoia bidding, and construction would be between 18 to 24 months. Tonight, staff is presenting four options the council would consider regarding the Creekside Park hours. Option 1 is set pickleball park hours within one hour of skate park hours at Veteran Park. This would allow a single staff person to manage both. This would allow a single staff person to manage both facilities. If council chooses to align closing the pickleball courts with the skate park, it would have a savings of approximately $5,000 annually. This option would also fluctuate seasonally as detailed in the report. Option two, allow extended court hours during peak use months in warm weather from May through September. Option three, permit extended hours only on weekends and holidays when demand is highest. And option four, reduce existing hours further to minimize staffing and maintenance costs and respond to neighbors' concerns. As an alternative, the council could continue this item and direct staff to return with additional information. We have additional staff present to answer any questions and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Hareth. Any questions for staff?
I do have one question, maybe from either Parks and Rec or the Police Department. Have we received any calls of disturbances regarding pickleball since the change on March 25th?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. I have to say something. I've actually called the Police Department a few times because the residents are afraid to call the Police Department because they don't want the backlash. So I've actually made calls to the Police Department about the pickleball courts.
That's all I have.
Okay, with no other questions, we will move into public comment.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We did receive 21 written public comments in advance, which are summarized on the screen. The first person in-person card I have is Dave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, guests. I'll first say I really don't want to be here this evening, but I feel compelled to be here. And the reason why I'm here is because to address the nuisance of the pickleball at Creekside Park. I've been a resident of Brentwood since 1997. I've lived in my house since that time. I'm an Arlington way. Creekside is a great park. There's a lot of activities, people have fun there. Bike riding, running, kids playing, you know, they have the playground structure there, there's picnics. And everyone enjoys it. There's the frisbee, the frisbee course and soccer, you name it. But pickleball is extremely loud. I can hear it down at my end of the street and I've even heard it down at Fairview and Arlington Way to tell you how loud that is. I've heard it down on Creek Road by Wolf Ranch. So that's how loud they can be, or the noise that travels. There's loud yelling, there's swearing. I've seen them swear and scare the kids playing tennis there. So just to tell you, the, I don't call it, just the mental attitude that they have at times. I witnessed, you know, kids scaring the young kids playing tennis. I've seen them harass and intimidate the neighbors, the home, they're not just neighbors, they're homeowners. They pay taxes. They live in this place. They live here day in and day out. So if you can imagine having this, you know, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, it's like having, you know, everyone mentioning about parking here at these other locations. Imagine the parking problem that you have now on the streets. And imagine having farmers market every day in your neighborhood because that's what it's like. The crowds, the noise, everything down there. They're disrespectful to the neighborhood, the homeowners. They run the stop sign there at Claremont and Arlington. I've seen them speed down the street. They block driveways, they block the crosswalks. The homeowners don't want to leave their house to go to the store because they're afraid that they're going to have to lose a parking space and, you know, hopefully find one. I mean, that's the impact that has occurred to this neighborhood. It's crowded. There can be 16 players playing at one time on the court and another 20 plus or more approximately milling around. They block the walkway. They don't care. People are walking by, they just mill around, they put their chairs in the walkway there. So that's the behavior that they have. This is what we deal with. I'm down there almost every day. I go on walks, walk my dogs. I've even had, you know, prior to the pickleball being here, they were, well, anyway, I overran my time.
The speaker's time has expired. The next speaker is Isol. Carrato?
Should I say good morning or good evening? So thank you, Council, for your patience and your forward thinking and continuing to keep Brentwood a progressive community. I do feel for the resident that's there. But what's interesting with this meeting tonight, all I hear is growth. And so truthfully, I think Creekside's are growing itself in less than a year that it's been in place. And yes, to your point, last weekend, we had 28 people there waiting to play. So it's not a matter of a Band-Aid to put a time factor on the lights. People are always going to be there, whether it's 7 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night. The unfortunate thing, it's a loud sport. I don't think people are disrespectful. I think we're a community that brings people in. We give our time up, teach kids how to play, parents how to play. And you're seeing more kids come, more teenagers. And it's a very, it's a beautiful thing to see the community grow. So I don't have much to say other than I think it's more of a Band-Aid that you're going to do by just adding an hour or taking an hour away. The real truth of the matter is Brentwood is a growing community and you need to provide that resource. It may not be a financial revenue factor that you're bringing in a pickleball court, but it's, for people, it's both social, mental and health. And it provides that resource for the community. So take that in consideration. I do take both sides because I do feel for the residents because it's a loud sport. So thank you for your time.
Aaron?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Council and the city for providing pickleball courts. I second the comments just made that having additional courts, having more courts in a location that is not next to homes would be a terrific improvement. I agree with a few things that the earlier gentleman said as far as there being a noise issue. I would urge people who are involved in this process and these decisions to come and visit the courts when they're in action and see what they're like. There's a lot of terrific community building. I often go to the courts. I often bring my children. It feels like a great environment for them. Does that mean that there is never a square word spoken? No. Does that mean that it is an unsafe or a threatening or a bad environment? I would strongly object to saying that it is unsafe or intimidating or at least in accordance with my experience and I've spent a lot of time there in the mornings and the evenings at various times. So I would urge people who are involved with this to come and see. Come and just see what's going on, get a sense for what the feeling is like amongst the very frequently 16 or more people waiting to get on the courts. There's a lot of demand, there's a lot of community, there's a lot of fun that happens there, a lot of physical activity. It's a terrific, a terrific thing. And so please, please try to get a clear picture of what things are like there. The other thing that I would strongly encourage the council to consider is not locking the courts. We're getting close to the time of year. I mean, already right now, it's dark by about 8 o'clock. You can have a timer for when the lights are supposed to go off and then the courts can be in use until that time and then the lights will be off. I personally do not think that there will be problems with leaving the courts unlocked. And I would urge the council to at least consider that option. And if we as a pickleball community do not have your trust, I would encourage you to let us know what we can do to gain your trust. What can we do to show that we are a valuable, positive community that is adding to Brentwood? Thank you very much.
Joshua?
And do I just press the button to start speaking? Okay. I'd like to thank the council for being here today. I think growth is obviously something very important, but when growth is being talked about, you need to ask yourself whether a growth is beneficial or not. Take the human body, for example. Growth in the human body can be the gaining of muscle or the growth of a cancer. And not to say that any growth in a city is obviously going to be a disease, but I do think that growth as a catch-all isn't exactly the best thing that we can have in mind. With that in mind, I do think that communities such, like very local sport hobby communities are important for a city to genuinely thrive. I think one thing that I guess at least both sides could probably take care of is clear enforced noise regulations. And actually enforcing the noise regulations more than, oh, we have to like call the cops. I think if the pickleball community could somehow make sure that noise levels did not get out of hand, we would not get the sort of complaints that local residents would be having about these courts. Because if you can't hear something and it's not going to disturb you as much as it would be if it was just loud. So I guess that's the important thing I'd like to say is if the community could somehow self-police itself about its noise levels, that would be great. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have one hand raised. Ian? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to go further on the idea of light timers. That made me think, that comment made me think about the basketball courts at that park next to Willie's. I think it's like Belfour something Park. Everyone knows the one, it's right across from Herald and Childs. Kind of close to school and it does grow, it does attract, you know, younger teens and more rowdier crowds. But at night, I do believe that that and the tennis courts do have like light timers. If staff could talk about how that one is and how that could apply to the pickleball court in occurrence to that speaker's comments about the lights. Because I would hate to see the city spend money on a senior recreation leader, which, hey, I miss my senior recreation leaders when I miss worked at the city. But we got to save money somewhere and that's not a wise use of tax money to just go look up a beautiful court that we just built. So just finding other more passive ways that save the city money over the long run and not have to depend on a human to go do it will be the best options. And also pickleball, I don't imagine brings the type of crowds that's a danger. It just brings people who want to have fun, but the homeowners also got to enjoy their huge investment. Probably the largest investment of their life, which is their beautiful property in this beautiful city. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. Moving into discussion.
I'll start off. I brought this forward because we made a decision and I wanted to see if we can test it out. After a while, we had gotten a lot of emails about people wanting to reconsider adding an additional hour or changing the timeframe. So didn't have any type of specific intentions about a direction to go in except just wanted to hear from staff how things were going and if there were other locations that we can extend because it is such a high-demand sport. Just for clarification, we will have some pickleball, like some transitional courts at the sports, thank you, I'm just like sports complex, correct? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, that being said, I think I'd maintain a status quo if things are working. And just for a little update, we had had to lock down the, let me talk into the microphone. We had to lock the courts down not for distrust of the pickleball community because we added courts because we do appreciate the growth in the pickleball, you know, the insurgence of the pickleball community. But we had to lock it because there was abuse there. So I just want to clarify that the reason for the locking wasn't because of distrust. It was actual abuse happening and so we had made the, I guess, executive decision as a cohort to lock the pickleball courts. So I mean, absent from that, I'm not seeing a need to make any changes to what we've had. I think we just need to come back and see if it's working or not working. And then also to keep this on active radar that when funding is coming along, that we consider the idea of, what's in the staff report, of additional areas. I like the idea of in the more industrial area where, you know, you may have some industrial work happening on my side of town too. It extends more of that on my side of town near Brentwood Boulevard. So, yeah, I appreciate the staff report. Yeah, those are little too.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. I mean, there has been police calls. I think it was a month and a half ago, two months ago. People actually climbed the fence and were playing at night. So even with it locked up, people aren't following the rules, which is disappointing. And, you know, it is a little concerning, you know, we got a picture of all of the rackets on the fence and there's 24 rackets on that fence and there's 16 people playing inside. Like, that's a big impact. I know someone said to monitor the noise. I would probably say that it goes over the decibels even allowed by the general plan. So I wouldn't, if I were you, I wouldn't test the noise right now because you don't want it to come in over. So, and, you know, people say there used to be basketball there. I think I read that basketball, is it 20 decibels quieter than pickleball or something like that? But, or it was tennis, something like that. But I would, I don't want to, I want to make everyone happy. Like, I understand what you're going through, but I don't want to get rid of it. And I think this has been kind of a good compromise closing at 7:00 because the worst-case scenario would be to have to shut them down because something more happens. So I'm fine with the status quo. I'm still, you know, I still think it's sad that people do things like climb the fence, shine their lights into neighbors' houses when they drive by, yell at neighbors. I mean, if you guys there a lot, I would ask you to please ask any player that you see doing that to please stop because we don't need the pickleball courts to go away. And we don't need the residents being harassed and even being them themselves scared to call because they don't want people to know who's calling, so they call me, right? Or friends of mine and then they call me because they don't even want me to know who exactly is calling sometimes. So I'm fine with the status quo and I appreciate you coming out and I really appreciate you coming out. So that's what I got to say.
I'm sorry, we can't, the policy doesn't allow for, I mean, unless I'm wrong. All right, 30 seconds. Go ahead.
If you'd come up to the mic.
Yeah, please come to the podium.
When you put the new landscape there, you guys put three boulders. The boulders are probably this tall. You've had people already fall. You don't see, you're standing and you fall over. They are a hazard, major hazard. If they got removed and flattened out, it'd be great. Sorry.
Can we have staff look at that? Thank you, that's okay. If we could have staff take a look at that, that would be helpful. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, you got to have both sides if you're going to allow this. So this is the final one, one from each side. 30 seconds.
So my recommendation would be keep the status quo, but you close it two days a week. You close it on a Wednesday and a Sunday or Tuesday and a Saturday. You got to give the neighbors, the homeowners, a break. You really do. You have to, because this is crazy. You have no idea the traffic. They want to extend it one more hour? I get it, but you have to think of the people that live here. You do. That's it. There's other options? And again, I know leadership is a difficult job, but you have to make the right decision. Take the courage and do the right thing.
Thank you. No other comments? No other comments, right?
I think the chief raised his.
Oh, okay.
30 seconds, 30 seconds.
Um I just want to piggyback, uh Councilmember Mendoza. I did a quick cursory search. We've had 13 calls for service related to noise um at the pickleball courts since May. So.
Chief, could you explain if a resident calls and makes a complaint on any issue? How does the hand, how does the police handle that? Do we disclose who the call receives?
No, typically, if it's, anyone wants to call and remain anonymous, they can remain anonymous and we'll go out and handle the call for service.
You said typically.
Yes.
Do you mean always, sometimes, or typically?
Well, if they want to remain anonymous, they remain anonymous in the in the call for service.
I just want to make sure that residents feel safe calling. And one of the things that was brought up here is maybe that a resident doesn't feel safe because they feel like they might have retrovesting against them. So I was wondering, how can a resident make sure that their information's not disclosed?
Yes, the resident can ask to remain anonymous and unless they're the, what they're calling about would require a citizen's arrest, then they would have to identify themselves to sign the citizen's arrest. But if they just called in anonymous saying there's five kids that jumped the fence at the pickleball court since 10 o'clock, we would send an officer out. If they contacted the kids, they wouldn't have the information because the name in the call for service screen for the caller would be anonymous. So.
Can I ask a question? Um certain cities have resident parking only. Could we do like along the front of the houses, like resident, I think we even have it downtown, right? Some of the downtown houses. Is there any way we could do something like that to mitigate the parking impact? Because we didn't build a parking lot there. And again, there's 24 paddles and 16 people. That's a lot of cars.
Alan, do you want to share uh the process the city goes through as it like, as it relates to parking in residential neighborhoods?
Thank you, Darren. Yes, the um currently throughout the city, the only area we have residential permit parking is in the downtown, as you alluded to. Um we don't have it anywhere else. We do have requests. Uh we we are currently um looking at some other locations as well, but um that that would require um a lot more staff time to kind of manage the permit program. Uh we do have the downtown and it's been there for a couple decades at least as far as the residential permit parking in downtown. A little bit different scenario, um but um currently, we don't have anything in place right now to or I mean, council can definitely direct staff to look into it or, you know, and, you know, start the program, but we currently don't have one elsewhere.
And Harith, I have a question for you. So I was in Oakland and this whole pickleball, I mean, everyone talks about it everywhere. And you guys have some, well, you had, because now you're here, some popular pickleball courts in Oakland. And they were talking about a reserve system, um residents only. And um I think did it, did you see any benefit of doing that? Did it help the situation in your old city? I don't know if you know, maybe you don't even know. It was a different department.
Well, we definitely were dealing with pickleball.
Yeah.
In Oakland, I don't recall the exact scenario you shared.
Okay.
But I do know that the pickleball community um really organized themselves in Oakland and they created a reservation process that they managed. We designated the court time because it was, it was shared courts with tennis. And so they were managing striping with tape, so they didn't have any permanent fixtures. So currently Oakland is considering moving pickleball indoor to some of the basketball gymnasiums.
Okay.
Um so I'm familiar with that.
Okay, because I was thinking um one of the things I noticed the first round of emails is we had emails from people from Dublin, Pittsburgh, Discovery Bay, Oakley. Like, there are a lot of out-of-town people, which I love having out-of-town people. But I think that because so many people come in and they're just waiting and waiting, that maybe, and I'm not saying we got to do this now, but it's just something to think about, a reservation system. So if you know you're playing at 1 o'clock, you don't get there like at 11 hoping you can get on a court. If it's all reservations, it might just thin out the warm bodies that we have out there somewhat. But so I'm not saying now, I think what I wa, ultimately, what I think we should do is just keep monitoring it and seeing if there's any best practices we can get from other cities or or see if it gets better, you know, after because, I mean, again, we want it, I don't want to have to convert them back to basketball courts because you guys are enjoying them. But we're going to have to figure something out if it continues to get worse and it doesn't get better.
Go ahead.
I do have a question. I don't know if, maybe it's for Darren. Um for the next strategic plan session, could we look at more locations for pickleball other than the sports complex?
Uh so I would actually not recommend pickleball uh courts in the sports complex. It's, I think we will have similar issues being that it's semi-adjacent to residential neighborhoods. My recommendation would be that we discuss placing them behind the Sunset Park next to our MSC, our wastewater treatment plant. There's plenty of space. We could build literally dozens of courts, maybe. Not not that we have the funding to develop dozens of courts. Um but if if there was the desire, there could be many, many more courts that could be developed out there. And there's only one residential home that's uh close to it, that's in that incorporated county, that I don't believe is currently occupied. So I would not recommend it anywhere right now in the city other than that location. There are some issues with that. You really want parks where uh they are seen, where there's lots of eyes on it. One of the reasons why this place is great is because there will not be lots of eyes on it. And so as it relates to public safety, it creates some challenges for the city. But we can handle that and that will be part of the strategic planning session so the council can decide. You have all these projects, a limited amount of money, and how would you like to allocate those resources? And if pickleball is one of them, we can move forward with it from the ti, if the council would approve a project today, I'd say we'd be anywhere between 18 and a year and a half to th, to two and a half years away from new pickleball courts coming to town, going through a process, identified funding, uh environmental bidding, construction. So it's not like it's going to be immediate, but so it it will take some time once the council authorizes funding for for a new location. And like I said, I just highly not recommend at the uh at the sports complex at this time based upon the issues we've had at Creekside.
Got it. Thank you.
I was going to just make a comment real quick. I I fully support the idea of the strategic planning session and looking at trying to do that, even if it means we start with a smaller amount of courts and and do kind of a phasing approach just to um kind of increase our capacity in the city. Um I, I'm hoping, I mean, I'm sure you're hea, hearing from all of us here tonight that we would really like to see things continue um in that site with respectful behaviors for the neighbors. And I obviously, I'm not saying anybody here is a part of anything that's negative to the neighbors. I'm just saying if you, again, as it was mentioned, if you see something, please say something. We uh would rather not have to remove the courts. Um that said, this is a tough, it's absolutely been said again. It's, this is a tough compromise between um the neighbors and the pickleball players that need space and don't have enough of it and the neighbors that are hearing all of these noises at so many hours of the day. And we definitely need to make sure that these, that this, for me, anyway, the 7 o'clock is the end of this. I don't, I don't want to see people coming in, climbing the walls and playing with glow-in-the-dark balls and all of that. So um I would agree with what the Vice Mayor said as far as um keeping things at the status quo just because it is a compromise. We've received a lot of emails asking us to extend the hours, but I just don't think that's feasible to the neighbors there. I don't think it's fair. Um so just sharing my opinion and ready for someone to make a motion.
Yeah. I make a motion that we keep things as-is and make no adjustments to any schedule at the Creekside Pickleball Courts.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we come back and review this in like a year's time from now?
Yes.
Thank you.
And review in a year's time.
Did you hear the amendment?
I made a friendly amendment that we come back and review this in a year's time from now to look at funding for other locations and also um if the location is still feasible with the timeframe and everything.
Could it come back at the strategic planning in January for funding?
Which would be earlier, yeah.
That would be fine. That'd be like a more of a
And that, we'll discuss different projects. Anyone who wants projects, that's when you add them in.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no opposition. That motion passes. Um any future agenda item requests? Okay, then we just need a motion for adjournment.
I think that Councilmember Maloney asks that we adjourn in honor of two fallen Brentwood residents.
Okay.
I would like to adjourn in that in order. So I make a motion to adjourn in honor of Ruben and Avon.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.